All right, so I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on this Tuesday, January 13th, 2015. We had a closed session at 6:00 PM, and we have nothing to report out from that. And I'm happy to report that we're starting our 7:00 PM regular meeting right on time. So... If we could do a call to order and roll call. Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Delasso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Skilman?
Here.
And if you could all rise and join me with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we're going to move on to approval of minutes from the December 9th regular meeting and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a close second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And could the record reflect that it's a 5-0 vote in favor? And I would ask our deputy city clerk to read our housekeeping items.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following. Silence electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, and it's an old building, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the west wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table right inside the entrance to the chamber. Place a completed speaker card in the designated tray located by the deputy city clerk, and when their name is announced, a speaker should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you for that. Yes, Mr. Parish?
Thank you, Mayor. The audience, I'm George. I want to speak on this issue. But for recently. The public, because the fact is... Sure, this shall... Decided to take things under... And the city council... And not answer.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else want to make a public comment on the housekeeping items that were listed? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. And now I see there are comments from me that are requested, so I'm next on the agenda. The one thing that I was thinking about was having seen how it's handled in different cities. I really do appreciate being part of an organization where we may not always agree or come at things from different perspectives, but at the same time, we are collegial enough with each other to take turns and rotate the position of mayor through all of our members, which I think is a really great reflection on our community and how things should be done instead of trying to vie behind the scenes and get so-and-so to vote for you so that next year you'll vote for them. So I really do appreciate that, and I'm very proud to be part of this organization, and I look forward to this year serving all of you as our mayor. Then I also have a presentation to make to our previous mayor, John Delasso. Should we do this out at the dais? Would that be easier? Oh, well, okay. How much do I want to embarrass Mr. Delasso? All right. So, Mr. Delasso, on behalf of the City of Kattati, we are giving you this plaque which states that John Delasso served as our mayor for the year of 2014, and we want to thank you for your dedication and service. And now I'd like to invite everybody to endure some refreshments and a brief reception for our...
Yes.
Oh, certainly, yes, yes. Councilmember Landman, please, since you brought it up.
Since the gauntlet was laid down to see how much we could embarrass our outgoing mayor, I don't want to let that go by without adding a little something to that. But I'd like to pause and reflect. The one thing that's funny, I found in this world, if we make a mistake, we certainly hear about that. But when somebody does a very good job at something, often it's not mentioned. So I want to be on the record, and I'm very pleased to congratulate my friend, our outgoing mayor, John Delasso, on what I feel is a truly excellent job he did for me, for this council, and all of you in our community as mayor last year. It was my absolute great pleasure to work with you, and I can't tell you how lucky we were to have you there. There were many challenges, all of which you handled with a good sense of humor, thoroughness, thoughtfulness, and I'm just going to close by saying, I've heard you called John, I've heard you called Mr. Delasso, I even heard you rather amusingly called chairman, and I kind of like that one a little bit, that's funny. But, you know, I was very proud to call you mayor and very proud to continue to call him my friend, so thank you for the excellent job you did.
Does anybody else want to add their accolades?
Oh, sure.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Public comment? It's not time for public comment.
Oh, as soon as we're done with comments, we'll open it for public comment. Thank you.
I would like to echo a lot of the same comments that Councilman Landman just spoke about. I think that you were an exemplary mayor, and I think you did a tremendous job, and I think that for a lot of the meetings, you, for the most part, had the patience of Job and did a terrific job up there. And I look forward to continuing to work with you on the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, sir. It's been previously said by my co-councilmembers here, John's done an excellent job. He takes a lot of humor with the position. He makes it fun to have our council meetings. And we've had, you know, our tough years, and we've had a lot going on, and John has always made it a lot of fun. And it was really a pleasure having you as our mayor, and maybe you'll do that again sometime for us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so I have an indication from the public that now that we're done giving you all of our wave reviews, and thank you very much for setting the bar high for me. I do appreciate that. If anybody would like to comment on the comments from Mayor Skilman, which is the agenda item. Yes, Mr. Parish?
From 2012. You said you'd think about it, give back to me. Ah. The city... Mr. Bullock's line about measure? Public and live... But after these meetings...
Thank you for that. And just to clarify, Chief Parish, was Mr. Parish arrested, or did you have a conversation with him outside of the chambers?
He was not arrested.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't have a conversation.
Thank you for clarifying that. Does anybody else have any comments about the comments from Mayor Skilman? Yes, please come to codeine. If you could just state your name and the city where you live.
Hello, my name is Connie.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comments that they'd like to make at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, and let's all enjoy some cupcakes and coffee. Can I eat, too? Okay, thank you, everyone. Now we'll move on to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open-for-Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The River Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit www.senamalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and also by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0304. And citizens who are interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email may sign up at nixle.com, which is N-I-X-L-E dot com. Next, we have the approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. There is one change to item. We're pulling item four from the consent calendar.
Okay. Thank you for that. Now we'll move on to citizens' business. Any member of the... Sorry. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the ground act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person from matters on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. I do have two requests cards. One is from Tonye Drowelby. Thank you.
Hopefully this year. It's a great evening.
Thank you. And we have one more speaker card from Skylar Palacios.
Harvey, for being...
I was there for three weeks. I'm speaking at Congress for three weeks straight. My wife. I... Yeah. I also knew a lot of non...
Thank you for that. So those are all the speaker cards that I have. Yes, Mr. Parish?
Thank you, Mayor. In the ground act, and was also... Without... I was arrested by... The federal lawsuit. Code violation charge. That's a charge that's serious. With common sense and integrity. Seven... Where's the fairness for cupcake?
Thank you for that. Does anybody else have any public comments that they'd like to make at this time during citizens' business? Yes, Mr. Kicker? Thank you for that. Does anybody else who'd like to make a public comment during citizens' business? All right, seeing none, we'll move to close public comment. And I'll ask anybody on the council if they have direction on future agenda items. And I'll ask anybody on the council if they have direction on future agenda items. Okay, I will move on to our honorary mayor, which is always a fun portion of our present, our meetings. So I would invite Catherine Bean from Technology High School to come up to our podium. And welcome.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Bean.
Okay, thank you. That was very well presented. I'd be impressed. It's kind of an Iraqi situation, so very well done. So I'll start with Councilmember Lehman.
Well, I'm glad at the last moment you just, excuse me, betrayed the slightest amount of nervous about speaking because I'm going to agree with the mayor and say you seemed completely calm and composed and I was very impressed. Likewise, I'm very impressed. I'm interested here, I, we have so many wonderful people in this community to volunteer to be our honorary mayor. And a lot usually bring an interesting facet, something they're interested in studying or a hobby that they pursue with some degree of success, sometimes several. You perhaps have one of the largest breadth of interests, I think, that I've seen in the last few years. So I congratulate you for that. I'm not going to touch on Lehman specifically. I'll leave that to the council to do. There's a lot of work to be done there. But I will say this, I think this, looking at your background and the results you're getting from college is a harbinger of the success. I suspect you'll see so. A pleasure to meet you and I look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Moore?
I just want to commend you on your confidence. You did a very, very good job in speaking to the council. And I think that your, your involvement in so many different activities is just going to make you much more of a well-rounded citizen and speaking up for some of the issues that you think are important. I think those will do well for you in the future and keep up your success.
Thank you.
Councilmember Delato?
Well, I'm kind of overwhelmed. Really, you're only seventeen? I guess I'm not buying that. You really do have a great speaking presence. So if you thought you were nervous, no, nobody up here saw any of that. Very impressed that you have a double major. It was fine arts and biology. That's really interesting because, you know, those, those two can actually go really well hand in hand. There's always a need for really good artwork in the natural sciences field. So that's, that's a really cool thing. And best of luck to you then. It sounds like you're, you're going to ace it. You've already got four out of nine that you've applied for that have said yes, so that's great. And I, I think the mayor will eventually, this evening, be challenging you with a little bit of homework. So I'm going to leave that to her. But it was great to meet you and I'm sure when it gets time, you probably have some folks you want to introduce. So don't forget that part two. But thank you.
And Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I'm also very impressed with your abilities. I was wondering if you'd share a little bit on your volunteering. You seem to volunteer what interests you from that perspective.
Well, the biggest volunteer drop.
Wow. And as Councilmember Delato pointed out, you know, the combination of fine arts and biology, do you have your eyes set on something in particular that you kind of put those two together?
I would like to do.
Yeah. Well, you're a great inspiration to us and you have just a wonderful spirit about you. And so hopefully you'll keep that, you know, with an open mind like that. You never know what doors will open for you. So keep that up and I wish you lots of luck and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So as I was reminded, yes, do you have anything, anybody that you would like to introduce to us tonight?
Yes, I brought my dad.
And then, did I hear you mention that your principal's here? No?
Oh, yes. God.
Very good. No, that's, you're fine. So the one thing that we would ask of you for when you come back to our next meeting is just to check in with friend of yours, your peers, things like that and just see, kind of a twofold thing. What is something that you think is lacking in Qatadi that we could try to offer to people your age with a variety of interests? And then also what you think maybe could be done for Qatadi by the youth? But it sounds like you've already checked off a lot of the volunteer work and things like that. So you're giving back already, so thank you for that. And then also, it just occurred to me when you were talking to, I actually met somebody who does 3D imaging of medical procedures. So that when patients are going to go in for an operation, they can watch a short video that illustrates what's going to happen. So anyway, that's just something to plant in the back of your brain. There are people who make careers doing this sort of thing, so.
Good to know.
Yes, so thank you so much for being here tonight and we look forward to seeing you again in, at our next meeting.
Thank you so much for having me.
And since it's a school night, I will let you know you're not obligated to stay for the remainder of the meeting, so feel free to move whenever you would like. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, so our next agenda item is the consent calendar. And as was stated earlier by our acting city manager, item four was pulled. So we're just addressing items two, three, five, and six. So I'd like to open up, I would like to open it up for public comment. If anybody would like to comment on the consent calendar? Yes, Mr. Birch, you were anticipating me.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to have interrupted, but in the past.
Completely understand.
I apologize. Um, report. Just, just items three, thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment on the consent calendar items? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And I'll leave it up to the council if anybody would like to make a motion.
I'd like to move and approve items, consent calendar items two, three, five, and six.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the record reflect, that's a five-o vote in favor of passing the consent calendar as it was stated. Now we'll move on to agenda item number seven. Under our public hearings, the alcohol offense and loud parties ordinance. And I'll turn it to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is our second hearing on this ordinance proposal. It's, the subject is alcohol offenses and loud party ordinance. And the last time we had the hearing on this was November 25th of 14 at a council meeting. After that hearing, I was directed by council to make some amendments, which I did. And so I'll go over the staff report again and point out those amendments to council. So the recommendation is that city council adopt a motion to introduce an ordinance adding chapter 9.28, defined as alcohol offenses and loud parties into the City of Qatadi Municipal Code. This code will hold responsible persons accountable for hosting loud and unruly parties and make them subject to fines and penalties. And then also, as a reminder, the, the fines and penalties, we won't discuss those tonight. Those would be set by council per resolution at a later time. And I would make recommendation on the amounts of fines to impose. And then, of course, council would have to agree to those fines. So the background is the Qatadi Police Department often receives complaints by residents that loud and unruly parties are occurring in their neighborhoods. Although the police department always responds and enforces current Qatadi municipal codes and California law, additional remedies are necessary to compel the host of parties to cease their negative impact on our community. Your direction at the November 25th council meeting was to remove police department members as hearing officers if somebody appeals the ordinance or their citation. And I've done that. And again, I'll go over that and point those out. So this, the proposed ordinance will provide our police officers with the ability to abate properties when a person or persons knowingly allow loud and unruly parties to continue. If a loud and unruly party constitutes police intervention that meet the definition of the proposed code, the structure of where the offense occurred will be posted for 120 days. If subsequent violations occur within that time period, financial penalties set by resolution and approved by council will be imposed. And council, the, the reason I'm requesting that we impose this new ordinance is the one I currently have to enforce is from 2007. And so this is a, this is also a loud party ordinance. However, the first response, we simply just warn the offenders. But it only lasts for 24 hours. So somebody can have a party every 24 hours, so every night, and we're back there and it's treated as a first offense. It's like the movie Groundhog Day. And so therefore, I'm making a recommendation that this ordinance be adopted. Just a quick definition to point out, for a party that's loud and unruly would be to have a gathering of six or more persons on any private property in a manner which constitutes a substantial disturbance of the quiet enjoyment of a private or public property in a significant segment of a neighborhood as a result of the conduct constituting violation of law. Illustrated, illustrative of such unlawful conduct is excessive noise or traffic, obstruction of public streets by crowds or vehicles, public drunkenness, the service of alcohol minors, fights disturbances of the peace, public urination, and littering. And then so, on the second page of the document in front of you is under H, the hearing officer. You can see that I've changed that to where the city manager, city manager or their designee will appoint a hearing officer instead of a member of the police department. And then that's further amended on 9.38100. If you skip to there, it removes police officers as the administrative hearing officer and it adds the city manager once again there. And then one more change is the, on the, at the end of the document, it has the November 25th date. So that would be amended to reflect today's date. And again, these fines are, will be set by resolution by council. And it's my recommendation that we adopt this ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time for Chief Parish? Okay, yes, go ahead. Councilmember Lehman?
Just in terms of process, so seeing the changes that you made, Chief, and thank you for that. So the hearing officer would then be the city manager and his or her designee. I guess my question could be for you, our acting city manager. Typically, what, who would be the designees that might receive this function and be asked to serve in this manner?
So how, how I'd see that playing out is it would be either a department head or maybe a, you know, some sort of contractor if that's warranted, like a consultant, if need be. Someone that would specialize in administrative hearing procedures. I, I would, I would think generally that would be the city manager in most cases.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. I am much more comfortable with this, Chief Parish. I think you did a great job. I think it keeps it, the ability to appeal to a neutral party. So I think that's great. And I think it gives, and also gives it a little bit more teeth, I think, in my opinion. I have a question though, and I may have missed it in the material that I was reading beforehand. But when you talk about a posting on the premises, do we have a section in here that we're referencing on the, what that posting looks like? Is that a eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper or is that a big lawn sign? Banner flag?
Good question. So it doesn't, it doesn't describe it in here, the actual document that we're going to use. But what we're looking at is a, a posting that would, well, first of all, the police officer and occupant of the home that gets posted in here, they, they agree on where it's going to get posted for long. And what we envision is it gets posted inside the home against a window facing out. That way it doesn't get blown away by the wind or damaged by rain or whatever. But we haven't made those yet because I don't want to, I, I want council's approval before I move forward on that design. But that's what I envision is like an eight and a half by 11 paper that's placed in the window, agreed on both parties, the police officer and the resident, and we post it like that.
And the, the theory on that is that that is going to remind the occupants as they're inside that there is a current posting? Hopefully?
And visitors, hopefully. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Two questions at this time?
Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up to public comment at this point. I've got a couple speaker cards, so I'll start with those. Mayor Lee Shippin? Hi.
Hello, thanks, to council. And in, uh, I said. Happening to try and send me. Good night.
Thank you for that. I have another speaker card from Lori Alderman. Thank you for that. I have another speaker card, James Healy. Bridge of the Red. Thank you for that. I've got one additional speaker card on this item for Cindy Steffi. I apologize if I missed pronouncing your last name. Now that's it for speaker cards. Does anybody else want to make public comment? Okay, I've got everybody pointing, anybody else? Yes, come forward. Could you just state your name and the city where you live, please? Thank you. Thank you for that. I saw two other hands. Yes, Mr. Birch?
Do you understand anybody? It's ridiculous. This is bad.
All right, thank you for that. And then I saw one more hand. Yes, sir. Could you just state your name and the city where you live, please?
So my ex-cumple is on. So the company said.
And do we have any more public comments on item seven? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. So did anybody like to start out? Yes, council meeting.
Sure, we'd be happy to. You know, we hear two different stories. We hear people that maybe are more in the rural part of Cattati and the west side of the freeway, that this isn't an issue. You know, we hear different kinds of noises. We hear freeway noises. We hear animal noises. But living on the other side of the freeway where there's a higher density, I think there's a whole litany of noises that we are listening to. And I myself am very familiar with the houses in the L section across the creek from me that are rental houses and mostly rental to college students, not to point fingers, but mostly to college students. And, you know, oftentimes, there's some incredibly loud parties that go on in the night, and those of us that get up at 5:30 in the morning, it's a nuisance. I don't think that I've ever called the police. I've tried myself to go over and talk to people and just deal with it that way, and usually with no success, typically, for a variety of reasons. So, you know, I think if you're hearing noises of vehicles working on the freeway, that is not our jurisdiction. That's a Caltrans issue. That's pretty obvious. So to say that is pretty silly. I think to have people playing incredibly loud music next door or even in your neighborhood within, right across the street, across the creek, big bright lights, you know, coming into your house all night long, it's an annoyance, to say the very least. It was interesting to hear that comment about a panel of hearing officers, so that's something we might want to have a discussion on here this evening as well, depending on where we go with this. And ordinances can be updated, too. So this is an ordinance, it's okay, you know, it's, we're policymakers up here, this is what we do, so we can change these in the future. And if something isn't working for whatever reason, it comes back to council, and this or a future council can make changes to it. It's not that difficult a task. But I did want to really point out, and I thank the people, because it's not easy to come here and talk about, you know, my next door neighbor is making all kinds of noise, even if they've moved away, it's a very uncomfortable thing to have to say and do. So thank you for doing that. But I agree, you know, I think there's been situations over the years, and I've talked to numerous people in this city and in other cities where this is pretty commonplace. And, you know, if it means putting a sign up in a window, I have no problem with that. You know, if I'm at fault as a homeowner because somebody does that at my house when I'm not there, still my fault, still my responsibility. Take a little responsibility, is what I say. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, we're happy. Yes, I appreciate the comments, and we know it's not easy coming and giving comments. And I also appreciate that the students have come. I've also been out with officers on ride along, and there's a difference, for whatever reason, with younger folks, where they have to learn, and they do learn. It was a very polite conversation that the officers had because oftentimes, the students do not know what their responsibilities are. They do not understand that. And some of them are polite about it, some of them aren't polite about it. But in other cases, there are continuing houses that, you know, it's the party house. And really, that is what the crux of a lot of this is about, is not the occasional party that, you know, an individual, you know, might have, I might have, you know, any one of us might have. It's really more around, you know, this habitual problem. And, you know, I've heard a couple speakers say, and it's taking accountability. It's one thing if, you know, I'm making noise at my house and somebody either calls me or knocks on my door and says, hey, I can't sleep, or, you know, you're disturbing me, and I do something about it, versus what happens with a lot of these, it's that nothing is done about it. It's that nothing is done about it. And so one of the things that the police officers need are tools to be able to do their job. And as was pointed out in the Groundhog Day example, you know, you could have a party every night and for them to keep coming back every day, that doesn't give them the tools that they need in order to get their arms around this. So anyways, that's my thoughts on this right now.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn to the other side. Mayor Smith.
There was a few comments I had on there. I didn't know if we were in a position where we could ask the speaker question if we wanted to or if we could address that with the city manager.
I'll defer that question to our city attorney.
If you'd like to engage in a limited question and answer session with the speaker, you have that option.
Kiwan, wasn't it?
Kiwan.
Kiwan, how long have you lived in Cattati?
I've lived in Water Park.
Yeah, how long have you lived in Water Park?
Almost, you want to live by the campus as well? Or when I have, I'm with you.
Yep, thank you. Love us. Typically, I'm really in favor of additional ordinances that sometimes could be construed as infringing upon certain civil liberties. In this particular case, I think when those liberties spill over and affect other people's lives and those individuals that are creating these nuisances are not using good civil common courtesies with their neighbors, then sometimes an ordinance needs to be put in place. In this particular situation, since there's been such an abundance of these, a lack of concern for neighbors, although doing perfectly what is within their civil liberties, I think that's when an ordinance like this makes sense. I would support having a, possibly a three-member panel. I think that's a good approach. I don't think that you need a judge on a party ordinance. I think within the city, we could probably handle that. I don't know that we're going to have a lot of these once word gets out and people realize that there can be consequences if it gets unruly and it becomes a nuisance. Talking about different areas of the community. And because you might have a community that has a greater division between the homes on, as an example, the west side versus over on the east side, the impact of these nuisances might not be as great as they might be on the east side to those west side neighbors. So you may not have the same propensities over there and the same number of offenses that could occur over there, especially since it's a little bit more wide open. So I think it's, this is something that hits closer to home. We have a higher concentration of homes in a closer area. Living over in that area, I certainly have seen some of those events that seem to be significant with the number of peoples and the volume. And I don't think at all that it is equated with living next to a freeway. Typically, if you live by a freeway, you may have purchased that home after the freeway was built. These people have the right to live in their home, I think, without being disturbed on a continuous basis with no regard from the occupants of that home on what it's doing to the other people. So with that in mind, and I think maybe if we look at, coming back to the ordinance regarding the appellate process, I would support this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Landman.
Thanks, Mayor Skidmore. I'll speak in support of this tonight simply because this is something I've heard for years from many different peoples. As a matter of fact, it took me to place the face, but I remember talking shit to him about this seven years ago. And I could tell what a serious issue it was. You're not alone. And your neighborhood isn't the only place that's run into it. So for those of you who live here, it may have been unfortunate for it not to be a problem. Your neighborhood, I can tell you, there's a lot of people who are misfortunate. We have heard a lot. So I believe there's an issue. But I want to backtrack for a second and point something out. Because one thing that's true here, it was always the case, there's always a few bad apples that ruin for everybody. I mean, that's true in everything. And I think there's really just a few places where that happened. And I don't believe these examples we're talking tonight are indicative of most of the young people we have living in Cattati. I know this for a fact. Actually, recently, in just the last over three months, while walking, I got to talk to a household of younger folks over in the Cloveir section, Cloveir Street, I forget, Avenue Street. They stopped, they were concerned about. They had heard this coming and they wanted to discuss it. It was interesting. I bring these guys up. It was about three, four guys every day I was there. And I could see for these gentlemen, it probably wasn't likely to be a problem because they had the right approach to this. They explained to me they needed a parade of million neighbors who sang. I introduced themselves. And they drove by, they waved, they made sure of their driveway, which is dirt. They didn't speed up so they didn't send clouds of dirt over. They thought about things like this. They got to know people. The one time they did have a gathering, because young people, they want to have gatherings. That's expected. They should be able to do that. They tried to do their absolute best to make sure there was no issue. And so far, as when somebody did leave some container outside, they made sure it was cleaned up for anyone else saw it. And I think of that, I look at how this is laid out, and I don't think most of the time we're going to get to that bad place that you're concerned about where something bad's happening. I think most of the time, if people approach this with the right attitude, which most people try to do, you'll notice people try to talk first. I think if everybody comes with that attitude, you're probably not going to get there. But for those few bad examples that we all know so well, sometimes you have to have something like this and that's where it actually will give the police tools to do something about that. So I would be supportive of this, but I just want to be in record because it did sound a little like we were setting a tone here that every house where you have young people renting is a problem. And I don't think that's the case. I think the case is to, unfortunately, just a few examples, it's in a position where we need to have some tools to deal with it. So hopefully, we take care of that and this works better for everybody. So I'll be supporting this tonight.
Okay, thank you. We've covered a lot of ground. The only thing I was going to comment on is that one of the speakers, and I'm forgetting who, mentioned the landlord. And they are also mailed a notice so that the owner of the property, if they're renting it out to somebody, does get notified that if there's another second incident within the 120 days, that they will also be liable for penalties. So that's something I just wanted to clarify with how this had been worded. I also think it's important, too, with our neighbors in Rummer Park, that we have something similar just so that then it's not an issue of crossing the street and going somewhere and the rules are different, like we had talked about with our plastic bag ordinance. We want at least to try to have some sort of sense of consistency so that people don't have to worry about, okay, what's my zip code and what are the rules here? And I'm seeing another person. Okay. Well, unfortunately, we've closed all that comment, but I appreciate you wanting to comment. And you can talk to us after the meeting as well. So I just wanted to see if we had a sense. I also appreciated the information about the panel because it's good to be able to stave off any potential lawsuits. We're at the limit of our ability whenever possible. So thank you for that information.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I just wanted to bring up that point that I brought up earlier about the panel. I mean, is that something, I don't know that we have enough information to have a discussion on that tonight. Is that something we should, we could always go back to this ordinance to amend? But I think at some point, there should at least be a discussion on that and to get some more information. I don't know if staff has any feedback on that.
Well, I know, too, that the chief is going to come back with a fee schedule proposed if we do adopt this right now. And at that point, we could probably amend it as well to add a hearing panel. But I'll defer to city attorney.
If I may, I believe, or maybe incorrect, that the speaker who first mentioned the idea of a panel, there are a couple possibilities there. One would be an actual, what we call a three-judge panel. But I think she may have been referring to the fact that many cities and local agencies maintain a panel or list of qualified administrative hearing offices. And rather than calling on the same individual to do these types of hearings, they rotate one by one through that list. And what that evidence is, is that no particular hearing office appears to be beholden to the employing, the appointing city and feel that, well, I must continue to rule in favor of the city or I won't get my appointment. It's all regularized upfront. And I do think that's a good recommendation. And I do think we could certainly do some further research and bring back, you know, some options for the hearing officer appointment.
So perhaps instead of just one, and perhaps instead of just saying the city, under the definition of hearing officer for city manager or his or her designee, we could say designees. That would be, would have a list of people.
Yes, we could do that, for sure. I'm not even sure that we necessarily need to do that because I think designee can imply whomever is appointed from the panel.
Okay, thank you. So are we comfortable with keeping the language as it is right now or do we want to bring it back a second time? That's going to be my first question. So, okay, taking a thumbs up or okay voting tonight? Thumbs up?
I am okay.
Okay. Okay. So then I will ask council if anybody has a motion.
If I may, Mayor, I do have one other quick question that came to mind. I don't know that the ordinance addresses, if there is an appeal hearing and we end up using a particular hearing officer, who would bear the burden of those expenses?
There is a cost associated with hiring or appointing an outside hearing officer. Typically, cities factor that into their cost of the proceeding, which are recoverable in many instances or may play a factor in determining fees, which are supposed to be based on the cost of administering the program. So I think that will have to be part and parcel of the research that we conduct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
So, no.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
So with that, I move to introduce an ordinance heading Chapter 9.28, defined as alcohol offenses slash loud parties into the City of Cattati Municipal Code. This code will hold responsible persons accountable for hosting loud and unruly parties and make them subject to fines and penalties.
Second. Okay, have you mentioned the second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstinent? Okay, may the record reflect that's a five-zero vote in favor. Thank you very much. And we move on to item eight, which is an engineering and traffic survey. And I will turn to our acting city manager, Dina Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the purpose of an engineering and traffic survey is to establish a radar-enforceable speed limit for our traffic officer that enforces speed limits in Cattati, as well as all of our officers who are certified to use radar equipment. The California Vehicle Code also allows for the local establishment of intermediate speed limits, such as like 30, 35 miles an hour, 40, 45 miles per hour, with an engineering and traffic study. And the engineering and traffic study can be the technical basis for establishment of these intermediate speed limits if such speed is found appropriate, reasonable, and safe. And so on two prior occasions, the council has discussed engineering and traffic studies, this particular one, in May 8, 2013, and again in December 9 of 2014. And as you know, the engineering and traffic study that's in this council packet was updated to reflect changes based on some of the comments that were received previously. And the engineering and traffic study reviewed several roadways in Cattati, including Commerce Boulevard, East Cattati Avenue, Old Road Highway, Redwood Drive, West Sierra Avenue, and Valparaiso Avenue. In the staff report, there's a table that indicates the segments, the study segments from the engineering and traffic study. And it shows in bold the current posted speed limits as well as the recommended posted speed limits. And the ones that are in bold are the ones that are indicated for some change. And this item, as the recommendation points out, is the introduction of an ordinance that would establish the speed limit in these various parts of the city. The one thing that isn't in the ordinance specifically, but would be recommended as part of, part of these actions are some sign and striping around on West Sierra Avenue between East School and Olaf and La Plaza, really that whole area, to be signed and striped as a school zone. It's not something that really you establish by ordinance, per se, but it's another recommended action that can reduce speed in that segment of the roadway. And I will point out that in the last part of the ordinance where it's certified, the data certification would be the, for this, that is introduced on the 13th day of January 2015, which is a correction to that last paragraph. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you have any questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Harvey.
You just mentioned the school striping in the school zone. Yet both the table as well as the ordinance don't really reflect that. They reflect that that area has been, I guess, recommended or put into ordinance as staying at 30 miles per hour. So how do we work that?
Right. So I was, the thought there was that by ordinance, because this goes in the municipal code, it would have the speed limits established. But then when this comes back for adoption, would be an opportunity to introduce or approve a resolution concurrently that would establish that speed zone. Does that make sense?
Okay. Any other questions on this side? Or is there any more? Any questions from the?
No. If we're going to look at that particular area as a school zone, it might be something we might address, I mean zoning, because I believe that that is residential zoning. And for posterity for that school, that might be something we might also address. And I know that that's maybe kind of off the subject, but if we're going to look at that zoning for traffic, I believe that area is still considered residential and that that nursery school is grandfathered in. So that's something to consider on that. Or related to that, maybe not specifically on that indirectly.
Okay. Do you have any other, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. So yeah, so there is a residential zone. And I'm sorry, you're saying that we should preserve what part of it for posterity?
If it's residential, we should address that zoning because right now that's a nursery school there. And...
I'm assuming that it probably has a use permit that was processed. I've never looked, but if...
1963, I believe.
Oh, okay. So it won't have a use permit. So in that case, it would fall to non-conforming uses.
Right.
So if the school were to cease operation for 180 days or more, it would lose its status. But there is no real common sense tool to address that because you can't spot zone something. You know, your zoning schemes have to be more generalized than that. So I think if, there's probably enough time at that school to cease operation and I'm sure we'd have some time to look at the traffic conditions again.
From engineering and traffic's study perspective, that's what would happen. If that school were to cease to operate, then there would be, in the next round of engineering and traffic studies, that would be re-reviewed, that roadway segment.
Thank you. So if that's it from the council, then I'll look to see if there's any public comment. I do have one speaker card from Lori Alderman.
Only eight cars.
Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Only eight cars. Okay, thank you for that. And does anybody else have public comment on this item? Yes, Mr. Birch?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as a homeowner, what the teams are. In most common law dictionaries, arrest, it's an arrest, it's an engagement, it's Many. In. Alright, thank you for that.
Did anybody else want to make any public comment on the engineering and traffic survey? Yes, please. If you could just state your name and the city where you live. Thank you.
To my way. Mayor, may I? Most. So you kind of. So.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who has public comment on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. So if you could just state your name and the city where you live. Thank you.
To my way. Mayor, may I? So you kind of. So. Please, Congress, I'm waiting. 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 So. Please, Congress, I'm waiting.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who has public comment on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. So if they have any comments that they wanted to make, this point about the engineering traffic survey. Okay, I'll start in the second to council member.
I'd be happy to kick it off. The first item, I think the public, there was actually some pretty spirited, some pretty good, from my perspective, public comment, and a couple of key points I want to hit back on, because they are the issues, excuse me, my voice is just really bad tonight, Christmas cold. They're really into this issue, and that's, as Ms. Alderman said, enforcement, that's what we're doing. Get this done, it needs the enforcement to make it work. And I think Mr. Kirchman hit it right on the nail, right on the head too, as well. Nothing works better than stopping people from speeding, from making us modify our behavior than seeing an officer out there. Even better, seeing someone get a ticket. I know this, once I see this once on a regular route, it gets into my brain, and I know that the second time I see that, it stays there a long time. And I think that speaks to the key reason I have some comfort with this, because this in and of itself, it's good. We absolutely have to have the legal right without being able to quantify a ticket, be able to pursue that in court. It would be pointless to do that, and there's no way we can protect our neighborhoods without it. But the issue is, seeing a few of these streets go up and speed gives me a lot of concern. But knowing that we are going to have both the ability, but most importantly, the resolve going forward, to have better enforcement in the neighborhoods, that's the second key part of this, besides having a traffic officer and further certification, we're going to make a much better effort of this, because now we have the manpower actually to do it. And I think that's, that's the part that makes me comfortable and why I'll support this tonight, because even though, for example, I look at West Sierra from the city limit to East School, is it a little problematic for that to creep up five hundred miles per hour? Perhaps, but I think that overall, having the increased enforcement and the ability to actually write tickets and have them hold up in court, we really get a better overall result, even with that increase in speed. So overall, I'm supportive of this, and I believe it's going to be a benefit. And I want to say definitely, we'll be looking to make sure that we maintain that enforcement, because this is about quality of life for people in the neighborhoods, and I think this is another issue we heard a lot. So this is our chance to do something good about it.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment?
No, I'm not overly thrilled with increasing the speeds, but I know that we have certain limitations that we have to adhere to and regulations that we have to go by, so I will leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. On this side. Okay, yeah, councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with us more. I am definitely not wanting to increase these speeds. I think I've been pretty vocal, that's why it's probably come back a couple of times. The only saving grace, I think, here is what councilmember Landon pointed out, and that's that we can finally do the enforcement. And that's really what holds it together for me, is that without this traffic study and without this ordinance, we cannot do the enforcement and have it hold up. I know that what it does for us is it gives us the possibility to re-review these periodically. And I know darn well that people on West Sierra are running faster than us, and I am hoping that with this, we'll be able to slow people down, because people don't slow down in some of these areas. And so while I am not happy with this, I do not agree with the science, if you will, of the, that people travel eighty-five percent of the time, you know, they travel at that right speed. I think there are certain areas in the city that people just travel too fast, and whether that's eighty-five percent of the people, or it's twenty-five percent of the people, some of them are just going darn fast. So I would like to give the police department the tools that they need in order to do the proper enforcement, so that would be the only reason that I would be supportive of this.
Okay, thank you. So I think everybody's already commented, and I'll echo that as well, that the need to have an enforceable speed limit, so that we can issue tickets that do hold up in court, whether it's at a trial or just at a hearing presented in PC in fifteen thirty, where you try to suppress anything, you know, during the detention, you actually arrest. It's really important to be able to stand up and say, these are radar-enforceable because they're in our ordinance. So I do appreciate that, from that perspective, having conducted over a hundred of these types of hearings. So it is very good to have enforceable speed limits in all areas of the city, so that's one of the reasons I'm also in favor of it, although I do definitely appreciate the not wanting to raise speed limits. But that having been said, I'll turn back to the council if we're ready to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I believe we adopted an ordinance adding Chapter Two, Point Two-Five, speed limits in the minimum section, Ten, Point Two-Zero, Point Zero-Zero, Title Two, Vehicles and Traffic in the Cattati Municipal Code.
One correction to that introduction of the ordinance, rather than adoption, yeah.
Bear with me, we're having some hearing dyslexia up here. I amend my motion to move that we adopt a motion introducing the proposed ordinance.
Second?
Okay, any motion in the second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, can the record reflect that that is a zero, a five-to-zero vote in favor of the motion?
Mayor, may I ask a question of staff?
Certainly.
Through you. I'm just curious about the, the acting city manager had mentioned something about the striping and painting in front of the school out here, and didn't want that to be a part of the motion, but just as further direction as part of the official record, I just want to make sure that that will then be followed up on, and that will come back to us.
So that'll come back as a resolution when we move to.
That was, that was the intent, was to come back with resolution. And the city attorney and myself will confer to make sure that that is as solid as I believe it to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to item nine. It should be an ordinance of the city council amending her Cattati Municipal Code, Chapter Two Point One-Two, Title Two. And I'll turn to our city attorney.
Yes, I'm having to make that report. Periodically, we review the municipal code on different areas, and in connection with my review of Chapter Two Point Twelve, which deals with city manager, it came to my attention that there are some atypical provisions in our current ordinance relating to the procedure for removal of the city manager, and it was my recommendation upon reviewing the current provisions, that the ordinance of Chapter Two Point Twelve be amended to remove some of these atypical provisions, because they can be quite cumbersome and could delay decisions that a city council might wish to make in the future. Specifically, what I'm referring to is the current ordinance provides for a required sixty-day written notice from the council of an intent to remove a city manager. That is quite unusual in my experience, having reviewed other ordinances in this county and throughout California. It also requires additional written communications back and forth between the city manager and the council, an automatic hearing before a city council, and presentation of grounds of opposition. None of these particular requirements are mandated by law, totally a matter of discretion for a given city council. And so it was my recommendation that we introduce an ordinance removing those particular provisions, while keeping intact the requirements that there be a majority of the council who would be required to vote in favor of removal, and there would be other procedural due process afforded to a city manager, including a provision that puts a ninety-day no removal window around the time of a change in organization in city councils. That's a very typical provision, because when you have new members coming on to a council, there's a desire to have a period of interaction with the city manager. So my recommendation is before you, it is shown in the packet exactly which language we would recommend would be removed or modified. We've also recommended adding, which is a given in law, but thought it would be important to add to the ordinance, that city manager, like other employees of the city, is an at-will employee, and the city manager actually serves at the will of the council. That's my report, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the council at this point, for our city attorney? Okay, I'm seeing head shakes.
I do.
Okay, first, Mayor.
The ready window between the new officers coming in, or officers leaving, or electeds leaving, is that a state law?
That is not a state law, it is a very common feature of these types of ordinances. However, it may be grounded in case law, I actually have not researched that, and I certainly could do that and come back to you with that report if you'd like, but I'm not aware of any particular statute or regulation that requires that. It's just something that is very common, and I believe is found in the other city manager ordinances throughout the county. So my goal was, in making my recommendations, which of course you're free to change, was to afford some regularity in procedure, so that the city manager here would have, you know, those certain protections that seem to be very common or given, while removing those provisions that were unusual and, you know, more than the typical. those provisions that were unusual and, you know, more than the typical requirements in such ordinances.
I certainly appreciate the work that went into this and I would support it very much. I did have a concern about the 90 days and I wasn't sure what the history of that was or if it was common amongst city manager contracts. And maybe previous city managers very much supported that. And it seems to have a limitation on the existing council or the newly-elected council.
I will agree with you, there is a limitation. I think it's probably appropriate to have some kind of window in the case of a council organization so that you don't have, for example, you know, brand-new members coming on and it's their first order of business, you know, finding a majority to remove a council member without having any opportunity to have worked with the individual. Whether it needs to be 90 days or not is another issue. And again, I would like the opportunity to research that further rather than just say that we could eliminate such a window at this time. But I'd be happy to do that and bring that back to you.
I certainly see the logic in having some sort of opportunity afforded to work with the existing manager, unless of course there were some other malfeasance or something where they wouldn't need that.
Yes.
I don't know how the existing council feels on that. I don't know that 90 days is necessary, maybe 60 is okay, or maybe there's a comfort level with the existing council member, or maybe we might want to wait and let Ms. Donahue come back with some history on that. Or we may not need it, I don't know.
Okay, I'm getting all kinds of hands now, so...
Councilmember, hurry. Okay. I would like to see our city attorney look at that. I did a cursory look at a bunch of the cities in Sonoma County and some of them were just silent on the issue. They said nothing. Some of them had this clause on it, but it definitely, from looking at a bunch of the Sonoma County cities, it was definitely not consistent. So I would appreciate having that information.
I'd be happy to do that. Any substantive amendment that would be made at the time of adoption, if this comes back in two weeks, at that point, we would need to reintroduce the ordinance. So we have a couple options here. One is if you decide in a couple weeks' time that you're comfortable with adopting the ordinance as presently crafted, in the meantime, I can begin my research. And if in fact there is a basis for a shorter window of time or no window of time, we can always come back and make that one additional amendment. Otherwise, I can get direction from you in two weeks' time, perhaps, that you do want that amendment and then we'll just do a reintroduction at your next meeting. So, either way, it'll probably add a couple weeks to the process, but it's certainly doable.
Councilmember Delasa.
Yeah, I think, I would move in the direction that we would approve something like this this evening. And if there's changes that we may want to look at at the next meeting, so be it, we can do that and then reintroduce the ordinance, that's fine. But I will say that, you know, 60 or even 90 days is something that goes by incredibly fast and that's usually kind of a recruitment period. So even if a new council majority was to come in and say, you know, "We don't like the way you've run the city, city manager X, you're out of here," it's going to take you at least 90 days, in my opinion, to bring somebody on. The whole recruitment process, it's not a simple process and you're kind of putting yourself in a liability, in my opinion, by not having that position continue doing work. Furthermore, it's the job of the council to pay attention and if a city manager is not doing a good job, take action on it. Don't be waiting for a change in city council, that would be silly. So I would hope, I mean, Johnny used the word malfeasance and it doesn't even have to get to that level, but if, you know, if there's a person in that position who is not doing an exemplary enough job, in our opinion, then the council should be taking some kind of an action on that and not waiting for something like this to occur. So that's why I'm saying I'd be fine with the 90 days as it exists and I may even be fine with it even if I hear some other cities have 60, I don't know. But I'd be curious to hear what comes back and if there's any case law about that. But that would be the direction I'd like to, the direction I'd be going tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lanning, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Gilliam. I'm really happy that we have a chance to take a look at this. And modernly, our city manager personnel process, it's been almost a decade since we had a chance really to look at this, so it's a great time to do that. I'm very supportive of that. On this particular point, though, I would tend to agree, I see a personal need to change it right now. I don't see anything that would direct me in that direction for these reasons. That 90-day timeline, first of all, something I agree is going to go very quickly, just like that. It's related to a very good idea and is the idea to try and remove politics out of the issue of good governance. Because as we all know, politics can wear its ugly head, there can be sides, there can be teams or confidences, but sometimes when you put people together and harness working together, you find things are fine. And I think there's an expectation that new councilors should take the time to get to know their staffers. And so I think there's a benefit to that three months. And I would point out that since, as far as we know, there may be a few cities that are somewhat nebulous in this, but most of the cities around here that have spoken, at least, do have a standard, we have a rough standard, at least in this county, 90 days. Since we're currently in between in shopping for city managers, I'd like for us to stay in that range of best practices so we're not on the edge. So think about it. Even if we did want to peel down 30 days, I don't see where that gives us any benefit or makes any substantive difference. It just increases more time for us, more time for staff. So from my perspective, I've got a good comfort level with this as it stands. Although I appreciate having a discussion about it, that is a good thing always to happen.
Okay, so if we're done with comments from the council, I will open this up to public comments. Is anybody who's interested in commenting? Yes, Mr. Berch?
Thank you. Go for your bone, your response.
Thank you for that. Is there anybody else who has public comment? Yes, Ms. Alderman. Going to have to get used to that bell at the end of the red light. Okay, thank you. So, just to point out and to clarify, we're just revising the procedures that we already have in place, so it's not really a reaction to, it's just to bring us up so that we're the same as all the cities, as the city attorney mentioned as well. So we want to keep it consistent throughout the county if possible. So I'll bring it back to council, if there are any comments that you'd like to make.
May I, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Lanning.
A question for city attorney Donnie, just taking through this. My understanding is the city manager is somebody who works basically at-will at the discretion of, complete discretion of the city council.
That is correct.
And has that not been true essentially in every city and frankly in this city for years?
That is the case.
And was that not true during the brief period of time that Mr. Berch was a councilor?
That was true.
Good. So just in case that missed you, I wanted you to be clear and have some clarity on that. The city manager... No, I'm not, I'm speaking to the audience, please don't interrupt me. Please don't interrupt me, thank you. So for some clarity on that, the city manager is an at-will employee and most of you people know that, so, and that's as it should be, it's a good thing.
Are there any other comments?
I have another question for the city attorney, if I may.
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, that's right.
If this ordinance were to be adopted in its present form, would it have any bearing on any recruits that we might not have in place yet for the new city manager? Or would we still be in a position where if we needed to, we could amend that?
Oh, you could amend it at any time.
At any time, so it wouldn't be an issue. Okay. Okay, with that in mind, I certainly like the work that's gone into it and the updating and bringing this up to date on that and really looking at the reduction in liability to the city.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on this side? Okay. So, with all that being said, we'll be looking for a motion.
Moved to introduce an ordinance to the city council, the city Katati, amending Katati Municipal Code, Chapter 2.12 of Title 2, titled "City Manager," to revise procedures governing removal and termination of the city manager.
Second? A motion in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? Could the record reflect that, so if I vote in favor of the recommendation? So now we will move on. It looks like on the agenda, we have no items, so I will skip to the city manager's report. So I'll turn it over to Acting City Manager David Newbid.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council have just one item tonight. The, it's pretty exciting, the city's general plan update is heading to hearings, yes, on Tuesday, January 20th. So the planning commission will consider the plan update and draft EIR and will make the recommendation to the council. You probably noticed that that's a Tuesday, so the reason why, of course, is that Monday's a holiday, so the meeting rolls to the next business day. And also there are copies of the draft plan and EIR, they've been distributed and they're available for review. And they're available for review for the public in our city offices as well as the website. So after the planning commission considers that, we will bring it to the city council for consideration and we anticipate that to be by February. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. We like the brevity, thank you. Are there any questions for our city manager regarding his report from council? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it to public comments. Yes, Ms. Alderman? Maybe not. So this will be regarding the general plan update. So I'll defer to our acting city manager.
Yes, I'll let our planning director...
Can be, she's right next to you.
Comments on the general plan or the draft EIR can be submitted in writing. They can be submitted via email or hard copy. We just have to have them by 5:00 PM on the 20th.
All right, do we have any other public comment on the issue of the city manager's report? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And our next agenda item is city council reports. So let's start with Councilwoman Delasa.
Just one quick item, and I had mentioned this at several meetings leading up to it. On Monday, December 22nd, I met with the California Homemakers Association and probably about 25 or so volunteers, and we ended up putting food packages together for needy. We had over 100 packages that were put together and each of them included fresh fruits and vegetables, frozen turkey, and assortment of canned goods, too. And those were distributed from Petaluma to the south, up to Healdsburg to the north, as well as certainly within Katati and Warner Park area. So it was just a great event. It took the better part of the day, I think. I was here at 7:30 and left around 3:30, and that was including cleaning up the two classrooms. So it was a great event and I think it might be an annual event because we had so much fun doing it.
Despite your broken shoulder, is that correct?
Despite my broken shoulder, I still picked...
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, hurry.
I just have one thing to report. On January 8th, I attended a meeting about health centers in Katati Warner Park area. It was a really good meeting. People may or may not know that in the county, there are 33 health center sites, and that health center is both medical as well as dental. And you might want to know that although there are almost 48,000 people in the combined Katati Warner Park area, we have zero in the way of health center centers. So there is a big push and we will be working cooperatively with Warner Park to try and make the Warner Park Health Center that's actually going into the building where Kaiser is now, so that we actually have one in the area. And hopefully, at some point, we may be able to get more services down here. But we enlisted the help of Supervisor Rabbit to help get us some of the funding that's needed, but hopefully more services will be coming this way.
Okay, and on this side, vice chairman.
I was just going to make an announcement that the Katati Annual Chamber of Commerce Dinner and Citizen of the Year event is coming up, and I believe that is the 31st. Do you know, Ms. Parker, offhand?
I'm sorry, I don't know. I know that the president of the chamber was planning with a couple of different dates. I can verify that, see if it's been reserved and final and whatever.
So I know it's coming up in a few weeks and that's a pretty nice community event that people might want to consider. They're available for that. And that was all I had.
Okay, I'm busy looking up online to see if I can find an answer to your question, but we'll go and be Councilwoman Lanning.
Thank you. I was thinking, who would get that answer, but it's pretty darn quick, so we'll see. Just a basic update for Sonoma Clean Power. First of all, since the last time we had a chance to get together, I'm happy to tell you that every city who participated in Sonoma County is now a member of Sonoma Clean Power with the adoption of Petaluma. So that brings Cloverdale, Warner Park, and Petaluma on board, and we have eight of the nine cities. And of course, Healdsburg having their own power utility for 60 years, they don't need us, but for the rest of us, this is very good news. Happy to say participation is remaining strong, as a matter of fact, stronger than expected. We actually have the happy accent of having to spend a little more on power because we have more customers than we thought. Opt-outs, the part that drives how many customers we have, remain right now at 7.3%. Those will go up. We think we'll probably only get to about 15%, but remembering that we had a very optimistic look at 20% initially, that's much better than we anticipated, so kind of happy to share that with you. Those will go up, we think we'll probably only get to about 15%, but remembering that we had a, a very optimistic look at 20% initially, that's much better than we anticipated, so kind of happy to share that with you. So for our new cities coming around, they'll be starting to get power from us probably June, July, just as soon as the CPUC gets approval of our revised implementation plan. So that's coming quickly. And for all those cities, there's going to be workshops, numerous workshops scheduled, and those will all be listed on the internet, of course, on our website. And that should cover that. One more thing, though, like Steve Jobs used to always say at the end of presentations, one more thing, I'm happy to share with you that we had our new election of officers for 2015, and I'm happy to share with you that I have a new chair for Sonoma Clean Power. So Katati went from the second city that took a chance on this fledgling, rather untested idea that asked for the most incredible thing you could get from politicians was actually a little bling in trust in the county, something a lot of us were perhaps a little concerned to do with past practice. But having done that, they followed through with all their promises in terms of the governance of this being something that was shared equitably and equally between everybody participating. And I'm happy to sit in front of you tonight as proof positive of that, because one of the smallest cities in the county is actually sitting in the lead chair for that for this year. So it's something that's working good. I think if something's a good example of how we cities in the county can all work together for bigger issues and perhaps get better results by just making those steps. So happy to share that, and that's my update for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Another thing that I was going to echo, and I actually had to look at my calendar to confirm that the last time we were together was December 9th. But December 15th, we had a ribbon cutting at the depot, and your last act about going near. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, and one of the things that we talked about was perhaps decorating it with some historical pictures from around Katati. So I got the historical society folks together with some of the other people to talk about making that possibly happen. So that is all that I have to report out. And with that, I will adjourn my first meeting as mayor at 9:29 PM.